United States of America, in this republic of which stands the nation under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
You can't take it off.
Black, Martin, you friends or brothers?
Your side.
We killed that man one moment. And since this time, listen.
He's been kind of bad.
Well, you get your egg. You have the agenda, probably you're not working to this yet. Say what you have on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote. You understand, put it. Record meeting commence meeting of September the third.
Moving.
Your second.
Second.
Second, please on favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Done. We have any citizen or just fiction? We're in, oh sorry, we have a show.
Good evening, the record, my name is Dan Anderson, with, uh, I find it fine, well, had a couple of things that I'd like to discuss, and I'll get some feedback on. Uh, remember what, apparently we're still experiencing power outages sporadically throughout the end of week, uh, kind of periods, if, if Mr. Vowles could, we can talk about that during his time, try to get you some ideas of what's wrong with that. You're, you are aware of it, but still have the power.
You're having an eye out too, huh?
I, it's just become annoying anymore, you know, I thought we brought an extra monitor. Uh, and number two, I, I was wondering if you've had any feedback from the new committee that you formed to go about the monument that you're gonna form? Uh, has anybody talked to you, you just got a hand or a visitor?
It's usually, I think, being up here, um, I'm having Mr. Shigal. Name, Mr. Shigal.
They came up and gave their email and cell phone number so that I can contact them when they need this call.
So this is what you said at a meeting, Jeff and Debbie, to, so they get the same vote.
I thought they were gonna handle that.
But yeah, but there are two of us on there. Yeah, but anyway, we need to get, uh, whoever comes up. Let's ask our secretary.
Okay, no, I didn't, I didn't, you got any, you got any support there or not?
Yeah, 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 we need to do this.
But, uh, I'm just saying that we've been waiting patient for over a year, we're gonna have, you know, some questions.
Yes.
We just don't perform today, so, um, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. We, we tell the meeting, that has to be at four thirty for me. We sit, okay, we have to be on Thursday, Monday morning, September one board. There you go. The chairman of the board. Six o'clock here. All right.
Carl, yeah, I want to do somebody buzz in.
Okay. What time, my jury, what jury?
Six o'clock.
So the point is.
Four, six o'clock, there you go.
There you go, man.
Thank you.
All right, back to you. All right, show them number four, only one record.
Right, I got it, here it is, asking, we can, we had also talked about the summer, the rest of it. You got four days of company, and you're not throwing two projects until we're done, we're talking dress home. And see like this, we'll do that. But see, one of the, you know, it's just the six week, eight week. He's part time, right?
So, I don't know, I don't know.
That's part of the goal, in the past, we need to, we need to kill. We need to kill the part time one, to help out until the grass.
Kind of, part time, full time.
Yeah. And that, yes, so, I'm making motion, but for how long, ready? I'm saying, I go, to, to the ones that are stopped, and we're trying to get it. I'm making, I'm doing that, and work on Friday until, and what?
Still any questions, Joe?
Until birds and the grassing is stopped.
Okay. My second question, Dan.
Black?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Leather?
Yes.
South?
Yes.
One more thing, yeah, the answer, the answer question, we are, we're putting on Peter on that, our elbow, that is, it's three problems, what it is. And if you spend three per day, trying to pass the other, probably what they would have done with that thing. Pretty good. Has our committee girls that, you know, working those, start at their work?
Yes, yes, one dollar, one from, uh, part three to eight. I just remember maybe that, limbs is the issue, that.
Mims, yeah.
That's my house to be in, it's starting to be, on seven o'clock every day, it seems like.
I agree.
Uh, yeah, right, right middle, a good Netflix show, a good DVD.
Flimmer.
Uh, and then we talk about how some of the creatures, yeah.
Yes, I know, check it out.
Just like Sunday, the ten minutes of six, power, yeah, what, fifteen seconds.
Let's come back on. And I believe that's kind of.
This might be good, or, I just can't show you, because there's fifty something switch, on the main power, because it just went off.
Off, off, yes.
This is September nine, I'm switching, I don't know.
Well, it's true.
But we need, we need to look into it, if people, fear about computers, their iPod, their, their.
You have a way of getting them all to come by.
Oh, I saw you sitting on the microphone.
I just got this.
Everybody got it several months ago. I put it in everyone's mailbox again.
All we're gonna add is just, no matter if it's Shane or Shane, eighteen thousand seven hundred dollars. That we already got.
Well, no, no, it's not what we're saying. No, it's not what we're saying is that we want to continue on and we want to, we wanna, we wanna create one that will, that will nail down. Yeah, that will nail down this structure.
Yes. How does, you know, what we want in that ordinance, so that the code is nailed down.
We'll, we'll have to, we'll have to have a meeting and we'll have to have a, a draft.
Okay.
Why don't?
So maybe you have a, a meeting right now.
What I would ask is, the committee that is going to make this recommendation, have a meeting and I would like to be able to be present at that meeting so that I can ask some questions, so that I can make sure that I have something that everybody.
That would be a little tough to do, but sure.
We'll appease you.
We'll appease you. We'll appease you, but, okay. Is it, is it beyond the realms of the protocol that, I guess any other ordinance showed that committee need, but perhaps not maybe that I could get through any and all interested other ultimate. To have these discussions.
I think it would be preferable.
I think so.
Absolutely.
You might have something later, won't you say?
We all need to sit down and have concrete conversations.
They all gotta look at.
During a regular session meeting. So, let's say, let's do this. Sam and I will get together and we'll go through this and pull out everything we want. We'll make it kind of, you know, real quick to read, then it will be easy for us to look through the reports and figure out which ones it is.
That'll make the, the meeting go a lot easier.
It'll make the meeting go a lot quicker and, and then the council members can check off what they don't like or put an asterisk right on what they don't like or whatever. We can kind of narrow it down pretty quick that way. Cause I guess that's what we're really concerned about. There might be some things in there that you don't want. Just a little more for me.
Is that might be a situation where you might adopt individual components of it in a separate ordinance. For instance, I heard you were talking about job descriptions. You could, you could adopt the job descriptions from the sound of your study in a separate ordinance. That, if you had, everybody can actually approve that, just if you break that out into bullets, that, that may be easier.
Sure.
Easier chunks.
Yes.
Probably just shame you on this mark that you just gave.
Yes.
Instead of, you know, instead of, that, that way we go through the many criteria.
Well, that's true, but, uh, the, the plan agreed to see now is to, uh, you know, is to, to make a motion that we pay Austin Peters to finish up her job descriptions. That's the thirty-eight-hundred forty dollars. And that's gonna take time.
Yeah.
That's right. We gotta have it. And we can take that in chunks, as council was said, but we need to, we need to get that done. We need to get her on.
We can't just go that hard and then never be on the outside.
That's correct. That's right. I made a motion that we, um, that we go forward with paying Austin Peters three thousand eight hundred forty dollars, set for jobs.
Motion to amend, shall we, will we hold down the table?
Black?
Yes.
Black?
Sammy and I were discussing for a meeting, is there, are there, is there a way before we commit to paying them that they give us a sample of what their job description is gonna look like? Cause they have some job descriptions already expected, but they don't seem to be very detailed. Certainly not something, you know, you could just use what's here without paying them and that's a permanent error.
I don't think so, only because the job descriptions, uh, it's my understanding, job descriptions in City of Cuba are kind of, uh, some of those services overlap. We don't exactly match what Owensville or St. James or so.
So, so you're saying what was expected was just a.
I think I'll show examples. We, we had, we had interviews and studies done that took our time and money to make them fit for our city. I would assume by completing those descriptions, that's what we're referring to, is the ones that basically they've already come to us, they just have to put this for being home to one.
Yeah.
Or they want more on that.
Why would it?
From what I understand, what, what's in here is like maybe a little paragraph or a blur, so to speak, but she's gonna give a professional, like how many ounces?
I was hoping to maybe.
And that's, so the information should be based upon all even these ahead of these individual employees, correct, as they're copying.
And they're going to do more interviews, and that's, they're gonna do more interviews to really nail it down.
Uh, yes.
And what concerns me, concerns me are those interviews, that sometimes, in my experience, that they come and they ask you what do you do? Do you walk? And what do you make of it? And they work that out, and they bring it back to us. That is the employee telling what they do rather than us telling our expectations with that employee. I feel like I fail sometimes when I think, oh, will you do that? Uh, I'm gonna say yes, because I'm only on the rest of the city where they come up with it, and maybe it would not like the rest of the city.
I agree.
Like the input from.
We've got a chart. The idea is for the supervisors to review and approve their individual departments too and make sure that they're fit. You know, that's entrusted, that's the main problem with that.
You gotta have a basis. You gotta start from somewhere.
I'm not, cause I understand, I'm just saying.
Where's your motion?
Sam, the, yeah.
You go first.
Ready?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Stop?
Yes. They show that whatever the, whatever the laws, the jobs anymore. Whatever was attached.
Whatever was attached. Okay, gee.
Good evening. One thing I have is there, question, um, from Jimmy West, who, from First Hill, is hosting an event for the animal shelter and they might have road closed just in Front Street. The, uh, evening October thirteenth, race of field. And when do the road close?
Where is he at?
That's all I have. The only thing I have for you is I, I received a call from citizens in my board and asked me to come by his home on Saturday morning. Uh, and he has a few things that he pointed out to me that I don't know if I can break as far as things like this in. And, uh, he asked if I was spending a few minutes with them in this front yard watching vehicles. Uh, now, have no way of knowing how fast the vehicles were going out of the rain like that, but it does seem like people staggered that road very quickly. I just asked if anybody has any, has any step ups on this evening with my building, since there's so much walking. And I said, I would certainly work in that.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
He's not gonna keep. Great, go to your plate, go to your picture. She's gonna, she's gonna go on her nineteen fifteen.
So, again, my customer. So, the next two ordinances are legislative report. The first one is from the Department of Transportation, Aviation, Transportation, Missouri. Um, we have a, a grant of funds every year and we have some funds that will be running out until the thirtieth. So, we wanted to get the remainder of the funds, so we knocked sixty-two thousand and some odd, it's a, it's a ninety to ten grant, is what it is. Um, to fully provide funds, so that we have those funds that are not losing for the tree clearing project at the airport, which is the next project on the list that they all know, you know, everybody knows about that at the airport. And, um, we wanted to make sure one of those funds didn't lose it. Therefore, the second ordinance is with Hanson, um, engineer, who is, uh, an engineering service that this council will agree to have over the next five years at the airport. And they, um, put in all their funds, they, they originally put in a contract for only a portion of the funds that they had for the thirty-two thousand that we originally got from the grant. Now, we're gonna get the rest of that fund that will expire at the end of the third day, so they put the whole project in there. The whole project will not exceed ninety-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-seven. The total funds that we can get from the grant will be a hundred and two thousand, um, dollars. So, look, that's a good story about it.
Yeah, but. Yeah, so we're agreeing, Captain. My, so what do you think, what? On where is he at?
Aye.
We're agreeing, uh, uh, number nineteen fifteen.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Cuba Missouri on behalf of said city to amend the agreement with Missouri Department of Transportation, tree clearing from Cuba Air Airport.
Yeah, first reading I have, you don't want me to. Very shy, sir. Am I saying?
Gobling?
Yes.
Black, Mr. Martin, Brad, Brad, Blader, Bow.
Yes. They show that that's the one. Second read by Captain, nineteen fifteen. Okay. Second, second by Shannon. On where is he at?
Aye.
Hold. Second read, nineteen fifteen.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Cuba Missouri on behalf of said city to amend the agreement with Missouri Department of Transportation, tree clearing from Cuba Air Airport.
After second read, mayor, what's your? Yeah, um, there's, Shannon, Shannon, hold on.
Bow. Blader, Brad, Mr. Martin, Black, Gobling?
Yes. After second read, nineteen fifteen, that's why this law come out, payment to be special ordinance seven five nine. Now, we're going to bill nineteen seventy, and then we'll get back to that. Second, hold. On where is he at?
Aye.
Hold. First read, nineteen seventeen.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Cuba Missouri on behalf of said city to enter into a supplemental agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated for engineering services connected to construction project at the airport.
And first read I have, and hold you. Sorry, that's, there, I can't. Hold on, can't.
Gobling, yes, Black, Mr. Martin, yes, Brad, Blader, so, Bow.
They show that, man, by county, they're checking nineteen seventeen, Captain. Okay. You can go. Checking. On where is he at?
Aye.
Hold. Second read, nineteen seventeen, Captain.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Cuba Missouri on behalf of said city to enter into a supplemental agreement with Hanson Professional Services Incorporated for engineering services connected to construction project at the airport.
Then checking by Captain, hold you. Yep, very shy. Same by Shannon.
Bow.
Yes.
Blader?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Martin, yes, Black?
Yes.
Gobling?
Yes. After second read, nineteen seventeen, by Captain, pass for the council, become special orders seven sixty. Seven sixty. Uh, this next order is nineteen eighteen, here you want to find your company. So, we, we'll do a question. Yeah, question, Jimmy. Please, our passion.
Uh, yes, we've actually, uh, been, we are members of a very, uh, public gas association. We've been, we've been here. And all the smaller operators and the small business owners and gas systems wanted to get some kind of mutual aid program involved, not even with the big gas companies, that will help to say if we ever have a major natural disaster, we will go tap into that. We get people to kind of help us or we can help them. And with all the information that we have in this program, uh, they can take us and match a system with your guys' blessing to go help them or we can help them. And it'll cover the costs. Uh, it seems in the past that some of the companies have been out a lot of money, they send resources, but they don't give anything back. Uh, as quick as what should be. They had to go through the federal, uh, programs, whereas this one here, we're all associates and it's one of the largest associations in the United States. So, it can just help the wrong numbers. It's guaranteed that we will be able to, need the money that we need or resource or whatever, it's gonna help us. And it will match our qualifications, our drug program, that's why we have all that in place. You know, because we have to go by power qualified. We just can't go to other towns, you know, we're not a government. So, that's where this kind of goes in. If we agree to this program, they can put us in that place where even if it's next stay over, you guys, you know, they're calling for help and we match. You know, without a clean R system, we can send the IRG with equipment to help. That's what is, is the future life of.
Don't we have that with the police department, the towns, usually? Change in the same hours. Any questions, Jimmy?
Hopefully nobody or us over.
Okay. We have had this, we only just shut a jam, so it's, you know. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna bill number nineteen eighteen. On where is he at?
Aye.
Hold. My first read by Captain, nineteen eighteen.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Cuba Missouri on behalf of said city to enter into an agreement with the American Public Gas Association for mutual aid program.
Motion, I have a motion, Gobling. Motion, same, hold on.
Gobling?
Yes.
Black, Mr. Martin, yes, Brad, Blader, so, Bow.
Yes, sir. First read by Captain, now we, we're checking read. This is very shy. On where is he at?
Aye.
Hold. Second read, Captain, on nineteen eighteen.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Cuba Missouri on behalf of said city to enter into an agreement with the American Public, Public Gas Association for mutual aid program.
Yeah, second read by Captain, more clear. More clear, second.
Second.
Second. Yeah, hold on. Hold on.
Bow?
Yes.
Blader?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gobling?
Yes. After second read, bill number nineteen eighteen, the best discount for that. I, now, for claiming special orders seven sixty. Make it right. Now, all of my new business. I'm gonna be last on this, a lot of topics. I'm gonna bring you in, uh, on this order, you and Kevin, so. But this, let me, I'll be first. I don't have anything to say. So, we had a water meeting to see, to see me, it's showing you impact this whole city. So, Kevin and Gobling, so we have Kevin and Gobling. You decide, you, you direct your mix.
Sure, so, the idea is to hopefully avoid, avoid a major impact for the whole city, um, in the form of water pollution. Uh, we all know that Cuba has the best water, mainly water, uh, and it is not really potent. We run poor right for the water and, um, that's always been enough. Uh, but the DNR Department of Water Resources, it's probably available, I don't know if this is a report from DNR, uh, requires that we do so many water samples every month. Uh, and here recently we had a couple of bad water samples come in. That's not a scary one, that there's equalized system, reading language, it's nothing like that at all. Um, but we had a few, few water samples that did not pass, more or less. Uh, and it's okay for there to be one in a month, but it's not okay for there to be two in a month from separate locations, and that's what happened here. So, it's certainly not in the world, but it has to be addressed for the safety of our citizens as well as Department of Water Resources is concerned. Uh, so they, they presented us with some recommendations on what we can do to try to address this problem. So, hopefully we won't have any bad water samples again. Um, you cannot have any, you cannot have this happen more than twice in a full month period. It's already happened once. If this was to happen again in the next eleven months, which would be the completion of that full month period, uh, the Department of Water Resources will basically, uh, take control of the situation on their own. Um, in the words that they have, uh, left for us, verbatim, if the water system triggers another assessment bubble, events within the next twelve months, a bilateral compliance agreement may become necessary. The bilateral compliance agreement will address a microbiological assessment of the triggers. Corrective actions will likely include the installation of an engineered coordination system. Uh, so what that means, layman's terms, is DNR will bring their own engineers down here and they will force us into a coordination system that will be, will not be temporary, it will be full time for, so it'll be in the future. Um, and they will charge us easily for their engineering fees and for them to come down here and force us into this situation. Uh, to avoid that, or at least to try and avoid that, we have some options. Some, uh, corrective actions and recommendations, if you will. Uh, one of those which is temporary coordination. So, what that means is with our own waters we were programmed, with the help of the Missouri Water, uh, Missouri Rural Water Association, with their assistance, uh, we can put on temporary coordination, so if I last one to two months, we can pull it off completely. Um, and as long as we don't have any more issues with samples, we'll be okay. And this is DNR's recommendation to us. Basically, they're saying, hey, work with the MRW, it's not gonna cost you all that much money. Um, and it very well likely could resolve this. If not, we're gonna do it for you and you're not gonna like any result. We don't like permanent coordination in our town like we came up. Um, we like a piece of water, plain simple. Um, I heard that, yes, state names, sort of like there's ways of hiding where you don't wanna taste it, but still, of course, we want to avoid that. Uh, so what it looks like we may need to do is, is institute this temporary coordination for a month's duration. Uh, as well as there's some other corrective actions, um, that we will do that really does affect anything as far as our water, the taste of it. Uh, one of those is going to be, will likely install, uh, circulation pumps in our water towers. And what that will do will just continue to be circulating water in our water towers to prevent the water from getting stagnant. Uh, excessively hot temperatures like that can have an effect on that water. Uh, and you're not using that much water every water tower, so if we can stay in it. So, that would be one of the corrective actions that we're not necessarily talking about tonight. As far as getting approval from the council that purchased those pumps, we'll do that another time. Um, but that's one of the things that could possibly help prevent us from having to go fully coordinated is by, uh, purchasing a circulation pump. So, that's certainly something we want to do. Uh, we also want to look into looping our system better, and we have already purchased some, um, flushing system pumps for the end of our minus that we need to get installed. So, all of these things together, but unfortunately, uh, including this temporary coordination program, hopefully resolve the problem. Uh, again, if not, and if in the next eleven months this happens again, we'll be out of options. If DNR will come down here and make some decisions for us. We want to avoid that all of us. Okay, so that's the long and short of it. And we're, Kevin, anything we have?
Yeah, great, yeah. I agree with Gobling and everything he said, uh, Gobling, I don't like it. We have to do it for two months. We said that I can get the citizens safe, even the kids, the family. You know, we have to make sure everybody's safe. So, we do it two months, hopefully we can figure out what we can fix and go on. So, we love the citizens, safe, even the family and all, the kids. We gotta make sure they're safe. So, I agree, Arson, go.
So, what we're, what we're asking the council tonight, or what we're agreeing towards the council tonight is that, um, you know, we're gonna discuss this further as far as purchasing a circulation pump, things like that, right? The immediate thing we'd bring to you is a motion that I'll make of allowing our city water department to move it and along with these systems of the Missouri Rural Water Association, uh, implement the temporary coordination program. So, hopefully we can avoid, um, what we possibly need to.
There's costs.
There will be a cost. Um, I don't have an exact number, so some of those will be from the water department. But we're thinking for all the, um, well, pumps and everything, I think it was gonna be twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars, other than they told. Uh, and with DNR's engineering and, and the firm institution will probably be two hundred thousand dollars. So, not only do we want to avoid that and permanent coordination, uh, we're gonna try to make this temporary fix, hopefully it works. Um, as well as getting the proper circulation pumps and some of the other things. Yes, so my notion would be to allow the, uh, water tower guys to go back and give, give the MRW and start the temporary coordination process.
Very similar. Awesome, thank you. I wanna say this, since it's discussion time, I am one hundred and ninety-nine percent against coordination. I never thought in my life, I've ever seen a water quality in City of Cuba, we got the best water in the state. But this is something that, if we did it done, and my coady said it was temporary for months, we need to do it, but we do not want one person shift a lot of water for any reason. So, there's no reason I have to offer it, because it's hefty. And, and Gobling, yes, about two hundred thousand per well, it's almost two hundred thousand per well. They're there, and they mean with coordination. So, we have six wells, so you don't have, we don't make, I mean, hundreds of wells. So, that's why I'm saying, you hold that. Yes, you.
So, I'm, I'm really happy to go back to you there. But let them, period, we're gonna, they give you a time frame, I, I'm doing something to that in such a, such a state, but we need at least two months to see if this works.
Correct, and they're gonna work with us on that, knowing that we're, we're starting the measures, they're going to work with us on that.
The time that needs for the process.
Yeah, and there's, and they've also put some other information on, uh, putting separate tasks on our water towers to get better samples from them. Uh, putting separate tasks on some of our water lines to get it better, see, so that's some of the side things that they're already pushing to take care of. Um, to help, help this process right away, as well as the committee that. Though, though likely come back next month, but if we run into a sample issue, I think they're gonna be willing to work with us to give this time, to give this time to, to do a sample.
If I can, or if I'm. I think that what might end up happening at next phase of this, maybe even the, to me, there are probably some sort of voluntary agreement we assign from Department of Water Resources to City of Cuba that shows that we are accepting their recommendations, um, and putting those in place, which gives you additional time to get all of those things in place before they start considering any other bad samples. Again, to be clear, we're not talking about there was anything scary in the water this time. Um, it's just, we have to meet all of their requirements, um, and to get enough time to get the problem, make sure we get this.
Again, I love them, they do, they're all team for them, safe for them, yes.
Bow?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Blader?
Yes.
Martin?
That's me.
Brad?
Um, I think that, Andy, you can have four.
Uh, no, that's, that's. All right.
I have one thing on that.
Totally right.
Okay, so we had a complaint a couple of weeks ago, we read rep line, as we were bats flying around throughout, we had that problem before. Right. Um, so, um, someone from Ternex was contacted, he went and looked at rep line along with Joe Miller, and apparently above the ceiling tile, tiles, there are holes in the ceiling and there are lots of that B C and mess and, um, and the bats can't, you know, they're coming in and out and making the mess there. So, this person is recommending, um, and they can't do anything to stop that, that K D C or something that protects it during this time. And what this person is proposing to do in Ternex is to seal the holes that are on the top of rep line and put in one-way doors. So, um, that once they go out, they can't come back in. And, um, and then once all of that are eliminated, then Joe Miller agreed to, during, um, a slow time at rep line, take down the ceiling tiles in sections and apparently clean them off, and this, uh, this company has a spray to kill all the bacteria, the bacteria on top of the ceiling tile. And, um, yeah. a spray to kill all the bacteria, of bacteria on the top of the ceiling tile, and, um, yeah.
I'm just afraid of certain city guys, now they'll be like, what, this is going to replace all these?
And those are fairly new. Uh, the total cost for that is one thousand nine hundred and thirty, and, uh, the gentleman, just to put him on his schedule, we'll have to have a check tomorrow. So I'm wanting to ask for that.
And they are, we're going to motion to pay. Just a second. And we're. I'll bear Seattle.
Aye.
Hold.
That's fine.
Now, Jim?
Okay. Yeah. I was going to say that Saturday night, I don't know, I've been drinking, all, you know, the, Susan is driving, you got smoking bandit. So somebody's willing to go out and watch smoking bandit, some Sonic, get, get sent home, and I want to get one for a geezer. And I also only want to say that, when you have, Chris, do you intend to, uh, sort of, do you?
Can you?
Can you? Can you, can you, can you, make sure that I get a copy of it, within a minute, so that, because I did ask all these questions, and the council not only told me about, about what's going on, I don't have the answer. So, and, and I want to leave a, whatever you're, whatever you're.
Of course, I keep all the, like, whenever you have recommendations, then you bring it to the council, and you bring your budgets, and you bring all the grants, and all that, that does come through the council, but of course.
I would like to have it out there, there, I mean, I can't make it through the meetings, that's what's good, but it's a work, and we haven't heard it yet, so. Not a lot of change to that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just, we need minutes to keep me informed, and I'm, I'm, I'm.
Sure. I'll put it up there, I'm sorry.
Okay. No, we're going to be on. No.
Yeah.
Uh, only that, thanks to people, they brought us, the nuisance issue is just blossoming, um, and, and I am committed, and that we find a way to take care of this problem, so it is not the only one, but it appears needs to be, there needs to be process. It's going to take a lot of cooperation from a lot of resources, so, um, the first thing is, I don't know, anyone, they have a complaint, not to make that, you know.
Yes.
And for whoever that's in the hall, they will take, point that, and pass that on, um, and, uh, and get a message to the city, how many complaints were already received, and, uh, since you're like, we can't probably, we're going to, the city hall will, we help organize that a little bit of, the, um, I am committed in some, uh.
Jimmy, Christian, and I had a first meeting today. So we're going to, you show me. Our property is both other people's property. Sam? Kevin? Your motion, if it's going to be extended, this is motion. Very shy.
Say it.
Second, Jeff? Who can?
Al?
Yes.
Leather?
Yes.
Brad? Martin? Yes. Black?
Yes. My favorite, we should have, we should have.